Okay, we are on the air, so here we go. And we are moving into the adjournment of closed sess- Okay, Dr. Avila, can we have report out of closed session, please?
Yes, President Martinez. We have the Board of Education accept it, the request for a leave of absence for classified employee number 1300618, August 27, 2018 through December 14, 2018. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Victor Ramira, Safety Operations Supervisor. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Brian Harper, Safety Operations Supervisor. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Maria Rangel, Assistant Agent, Nutrition Services. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Berenice Gutierrez, Elementary Principal, Trap Elementary School. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Owen Ross, Elementary Principal, Curtis Elementary School. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Francisco Camacho, High School Principal, Eisenhower High School. The roll call vote was unanimous.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. Okay, and we move into the adoption of the agenda.
And President Martinez-
Can I have a motion in a second? I'm sorry.
Owen, I guess is here, Owen Ross. So I just wanted to introduce you to him in case you don't know him.
Come up and say a few words. Mr. Ross, please come up and say a few words.
Well, obviously, I want to thank Superintendent and Board. Thank you very much. I'm very excited for the opportunity and looking forward to getting to work and making some amazing things happen at Curtis. So, thank all of you, and I look forward to all the hard work ahead.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And Maria, Maria Rangel is here as well. Want to come say a few words, Maria?
Well, Maria, I guess this means you're not going to retire.
Just thinking about it. I would like to, um, gosh, I'm so nervous.
You're with family. Take your time.
I would like to thank all of you and thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to assist Facet in running the Nutrition Services Department. Thank you very much to the Board of Education, Dr. Avila, and everyone else. Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Avila. And by the way, Nutrition Services, all their pictures are still up here if you want to take a peek. They've been busy. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So move second.
Thank you. Vote by Board members?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and time for me to induct our new student Board member. As we swear in our 2018-2019 Student Board Member of the Rialto Unified School District, I would like to introduce to you Jasmine Hernandez. Jasmine is sixteen years old. She will be seventeen October first. She is a senior at Rialto High School. Jasmine was elected by her peers at her school to represent the student body on the Board of Education. Jasmine and her younger sister, Emmeline, who you met earlier, is a seventh grade student at J. Hugh Middle School, were raised in Rialto by their mother, Juliana Hernandez. They should be here tonight. Is your mom here? Please wave, Mom. Jasmine attended Morris Elementary School and J. Hugh Middle School. A high achiever by nature, Jasmine also serves on ASB as a varsity cheerleader on campus and will be a big part of the district's Student Advisory Committee. You'll hear us talk about DSAC quite a bit next month, okay? Last year, as a member of the Rialto Cheer Squad, Jasmine took a state title. But academically, she also earned first place at a Mesa competition at UCR at the end of last year. Her favorite subject in school is science, and her favorite teacher is the award-winning Rialto High School Mesa and Robotics Teacher, Mr. Thompson. "Mr. Thompson is very much my favorite teacher," smiled the bubbly incoming student Board He allows us to be creative and supports our theories. He's great. I agree. When Jasmine finishes her studies, she wants to graduate college and become an electrical engineer. Congratulations. That's awesome. Her favorite Disney movie, yep, this, is Jasmine and Snow White. Okay, Jasmine, who said she is excited to be chosen to serve with the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education, best describes herself as "a hardworking, motivating person who also enjoys motivating others." Well, Jasmine, on behalf of the Board of Education, we welcome you to serve with us, and thank you. We're very excited to have you onboard. As I give you the oath, just respond "I do." I'll read it all, and then you'll be nervously saying "I do," okay? All right. Okay, you're standing. Please raise your right hand. Do you, Jasmine Hernandez, solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties about which you are about to enter?
I do.
Well done, well done. Okay, with this oath, you are now seated officially as a student Board Member of the Rialto Unified School District.
Can we have a picture of the Board of Education with Mr. Ayala, Principal Jasmine, and your family? Oh, right. And Jasmine, right next to her. There we go. And Ms. Rapp, please. Perfect. Make that shoe. Okay? And perfect. Get a little bit closer. Ready? Big smile. If you don't mind, can I have just the students who came here tonight to support her stand with her as well? With the Board of Education, please. Yes, the Board and the students. Can you have the YouTube later? We have a live board. Look over here. Right over here. Board of Education, the back students in the front, the tall guys. Yeah, you guys are good. There we go. Big smile. And you can look at the, Miss Ortiz first. Students, this is going to go on our Facebook and Twitter. You can follow us. In line, there you go. I like this one. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Don't picture now while she's still fresh? Go ahead. Sometimes these board meeting, and they want Christmas pictures, my hair is like. Okay. All right. Welcome onboard, and it's official. I like it. Okay, public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Dr. Avila?
We have one. Maico Montano?
Thank you. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Dr. Avila. Not to take anything, I mean, to our own, I'm a teacher at Rialto High School, so, you know, it's great to see this. So, instead of speaking on this matter tonight, I'd like to withdraw and speak at a future date.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If you need to talk to us afterwards, I'm available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that's it, Dr. Avila?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments on agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
We have none.
Okay. Comments from Association Executive Board Members, Rialto Education Association? Ah, here she comes. Save me from trying to make cricket sounds. Welcome, good to see you.
Thank you, Lisa Lindberg, President of the Rialto Education Association. I just want to congratulate Jasmine Hernandez. I need to tell you that eight years ago, when I left the classroom at Morris, third grade, she was one of my students.
Wow!
And I am so incredibly proud of her, and I can definitely vouch for her high moral character and high academic. She is fantastic. And that smile hasn't changed. It hasn't changed at all. I just want to say, welcome back to everyone. I don't know if I told you at the end of May before we left that we gave out over $10,000 worth of scholarships again to our high schools?
Thank you.
The three comprehensive and continuation ones. So, we wanted to let you know that, and here's to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. And California School Employees Association, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Martinez, Board, Dr. Avila. First, I want to congratulate our two new Safety Operations Supervisors to the Security Department. It's going to be nice working with them. We have, on July 26th, we had the Safety and Health Summit at the PDC. We gave away bicycles, scooters, and it was really enjoyable to see the students with their smiles, and it was about 109 degrees that day, so we had anticipated going to one in the afternoon, so we ended a little bit early, but we had some troopers that were staying out there to win the prizes, and it was really nice to see their faces. So, I think that's all I have. Our school year started off really nice. We hit the ground running, just a couple of hiccups, but with the support of the classified, the teachers and management, we were able to get through our first week, and I'm looking forward to a nice, safe year. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome back. Communication Workers of America. Haven't seen anyone tonight. Okay, if you are here and coming up, just poke your head, and we'll come back to you. Rialto School Managers Association, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Martinez, Board, Dr. Avila. First, I want to congratulate our two new Safety Operations Supervisors to the Security Department. It's going to be nice working with them. We have, on July 26th, we had the Safety and Health Summit at the PDC. We gave away bicycles, scooters, and it was really enjoyable to see the students with their smiles, and it was about 109 degrees that day, so we had anticipated going to one in the afternoon, so we ended a little bit early, but we had some troopers that were staying out there to win the prizes, and it was really nice to see their faces. So, I think that's all I have. Our school year started off really nice. We hit the ground running, just a couple of hiccups, but with the support of the classified, the teachers and management, we were able to get through our first week, and I'm looking forward to a nice, safe year. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome back. Communication Workers of America. I haven't seen anyone tonight. Okay, if you are here and coming up, just poke your head, and we'll come back to you. Rialto School Managers Association, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, President Martinez, Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Avila, Innovation Team and viewing audience. My name is Andres Luna. I am the President-elect for the Rialto School Management Association. I am here this evening on behalf of RSMA to welcome everyone to the 2018-19 Academic School Year. This year, RSMA's focus as an association is to build a collaborative culture within the management team guided by a collegial spirit that will advance the innovation leadership of all levels of our management team in our district. Just a couple of quick dates for you. On Thursday, September 27th, we will be hosting the New Administrative Reception at 4:30 here in the West Wing. In mid-October, we are scheduling a dynamic speaker for all the RSMA members, which we would like to invite the Board as well, and we will get the date to you. Finally, we are continuing our membership, our membership drive. Members of the management team who wish to attend part of this collegial spirit that we are building within the management team, of our great management team, please contact the Myler High School Administrat- Yeah, that does say Myler High School. Myler High School Administrative Team for you to register and sign up for our team. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, and I do see that we have the Communication Workers of America. Come on in. CWA in the house.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if you can hear me or not, but I want to thank you all for the enjoyable time we've had working here. We had an election recently for a new contract, and it was 100 percent. Everybody voted for it, and we had the largest group of Rialto substitute teachers voting for the, since I've been here, so I was very happy about it. And that was very good. Now, next thing will be to bring it before you, the Board, and I believe that's going to be at the next session.
Okay.
But we want to thank you all. I've indicated that I like the idea of not having that go on. Phone. Anyway.
It's all right.
Anyway.
Mine's not muted either.
I keep forgetting to turn it off, and then when I turn it off, I get yelled at because I don't turn it, I don't have it on. So I can't win. But anyway, hopefully, we're going to have a fantastic year. A lot of subs are going to be used when they're needed, and hopefully, we will meet the goal that our Superintendent, Dr. Avila, has put before us, and we'll see. Thank you very much.
Congratulations on 100 percent turnout. Okay. I guess RSMA did not show. Oh, yes, he's been up.
That was Andres Luna.
Yeah, I'm just going down the list here. Yeah, I remember him saying Myler, okay, he's there. Comments from the Superintendent, Dr. Avila?
Well, thank you, President Martinez, and first, I want to congratulate Jasmine, and to you welcome to the Board. And I want to congratulate each of the individuals who promoted to new positions within the district. And also, welcome back to school and the forces with all of us, literally. I saw many, many happy kids and happier parents dropping off their wonderful children to many of our schools on Monday. I visited a number of schools yesterday and today, and to see the excitement of the kiddos coming to school and the teachers ready for a new and exciting year is very inspirational. And as my innovation team went to several schools along with other district staff, we welcomed students back to school. I was given an early invitation to Morgan Preston, Cole Cussera, and Carter High School, but Morgan brought the Comic-Con Star Wars theme with Darth Vader and stormtroopers to welcome those kids, and again, the excitement of those kids. All but two were extremely excited to see the troopers there. There were two who were just very, very fearful. But I know that Principal Vada is going to make sure that those kiddos have a great, great rest of the school year. The other congratulations to those who graduated this summer from our high schools. There were a total of nineteen students who participated in the summer graduation, and it just shows that with compassion and kindness and second chances, students can really do what they need to do in order to be successful, and we know that by completing that high school diploma could be the bridge to many successes that await them. So congratulations to the teachers who worked with those kids during the summer to make sure that they completed their high school diploma. Now, you've heard that surfers wear wetsuits. Superintendent in Rialto wears a sweatsuit the last couple of days because of the heat. It's been extremely, extremely warm yesterday. We participated at National Night Out here in the city of Rialto and interacted with a number of elected officials, staff members, community members, parents, and many others. And while it was still 107 or so degree at the beginning of the evening, had a great time interacting with the entire community. And a special thank you to three parents who volunteered at our district's booth, Elizabeth Moreno, Maria Sandoval, and Mirna Ruiz sweated it out, but they were there distributing information on behalf of our district and encouraging dozens and dozens to participate in this year's giveaway, which is a a raffle of a $5,000 oil portrait that the winner, the lucky winner, that President Martinez will draw from today, will have the opportunity to have their oil paintings done in either Costa Mesa, Beverly Hills, or West Palm Beach, Florida. So, this is a, again, an oil painting portrait worth $5,000 donated to the district for this specific event, so let's see who the lucky winner is going to be.
Do you wish to draw now?
Yes.
Cindy?
Just says Cindy.
You've got a number?
Is there a phone number on it?
Or a ticket number?
It was a ticket number.
We will contact them later, either short of the next meeting, we'll stay anonymous.
Communications will contact you.
So congratulations, Cindy, wherever you are. And over the past couple of weeks, I have attended our district's customer care training that we have offered to the new cohorts of those participants. Lastly, we were doing the community, the customer care with custodians, bus drivers, clerks, and safety officers, both at the Chavez Huerta Professional Development Center and also at the Sunrise Church, who are great partners in our community with respect to us being able to use their facilities as we continue our efforts to become better servants to each other as colleagues and to the community, parents and students that we serve here in the Rialto Unified School District. And in the process, I encourage the participants to really get to know each other, and we had specific opportunities where we needed to share one thing that others may not know. And the, as we went to the Board to select a sticky with the, with the thing that they posted on the front end, not knowing who the person's name behind the sticker was, it was an eye-opener to the things that were uncovered or discovered about each other, whether it's the talents, the stories that we lived years back. I told my story about me being a DJ some years back, and while some could see that, others could not see that at all. I connected with a gentleman who had attended Crenshaw High School in the years, if you would recall, Daryl Strawberry, when he was a student there, and the connection was that two years after I graduated from high school, I was part of a kind of travel team, and I ended up striking out Daryl Strawberry. That was part of the connection. This was during that exhibition game. I hate to think that he took it easy on me. I want to think that I had what it took to strike him out.
He was having a bad day.
You absolutely do, Dr. Avila. You have what it takes.
But the point was that I encouraged them to visit for five minutes, 10 minutes, 15 minutes every day, getting to know someone that you may know their name and know that they work even within your department, but you really don't know much about them, to open up that conversation and that dialogue, and you'd be amazed the number of things that are either that we share in common, or the people that we may share in common, or just the interesting things about, again, the stories that we have to tell, that we're not just individuals here in the district or human beings, and there's a story to tell behind our name. So that's been part of the theme in our customer service training, is to try to do our best to understand the customers that we serve. Just as we would expect the best customer service when we are the customers, whether in the district or out and about in the community, everyone that comes to us deserves that same level of service that we expect for ourselves. And so we're continuing to make strides. The number of compelling testimonials from participants have been very motivating and inspiring, and it's just letting us know that personnel with Rhonda and Rhea and the rest of the team are doing an amazing effort to really structure this in a very productive way. So, thank you to the team for doing that. And then more specifically, I want to thank Nicole Arvizo from our Fiscal Department, Fiscal Services Department. So again, getting to know her, for the last five years, she's been the leader in securing backpacks with school supplies for students behind the scenes, no attention wanted, no campaign for that, just simply asking staff members, community members, for contributions to be able to put together. This year, we put together 250 backpacks, where she was able to lead to 250 backpacks that were delivered today. That was part of my sweating early this morning. She and I and Edith from Communications, and later Saida and Dr. McDuffie joined us, but we were carrying five bags in each hand, delivering them to the schools, and in some cases, we were able to personally give them to the kids who had been identified as perhaps being able to benefit from a self-selected backpack. And so Nicole, I wanted to thank her for, again, embracing the spirit of our strategic And I'll explain what that means in case you don't know what it means, but they have become generative. This is the ultimate product or byproduct of strategic planning. Our plan is not to produce a checklist of things to be done or a list of things to be completed. They have not come to me to ask for permission to do this or that or for ideas. They have clearly understood the spirit of our strategic plan and the direction that we are heading in as a district. The purpose of having a strategic plan is really to create the forces that will self-propel to generate, hence generative, new levels of energy, innovation, and creativity independently, where they don't become dependent on others, but they self-generate. Levels of energy, innovation, and creativity independently, just as the team in Nutrition Services is doing. And that is an amazing thing, again, because they're not necessarily saying we completed the 10 things that we were asked to complete and therefore we're done. They've taken it to new levels and directions and pathways that we can't sit here and map out simply because they have taken it upon themselves through their leader, Fasat, and the energy that she has been able to infuse with the rest of the staff and vice versa. And they're just doing some amazing things. I can't, I can't stop being inspired by the things that they're doing. And others as well, other individuals or teams within the district are beginning to do the same thing or are on their way to doing this similar thing. So Nicole, Nutrition Services, Fiscal Services are those that are doing this, not just of their own volition, but their own kindness and of their instinct to do things that are right for this community. So I want to thank them. And today, I, among the other schools I visited, was Morris Elementary School. And I had the opportunity to visit several classrooms. And I became really emotional when I see teachers really guiding our tender little kindergarteners and first graders. And two of those classes are as part of the dual-language immersion. You know, day two, day three, and the level of instruction that has already taken place was very, very compelling for me and emotional to see those little babies just with the spirit to learn, to the point where one of them actually designated me king when Vice Principal was trying to explain to them what a superintendent is. And he stood and shouted, "He's a king." So I gracefully accepted his appointment. But each time I visit a classroom, I simply get a fresh reminder of what my purpose as an educator is. You know, oftentimes, I'm asked what I do, what is it that I do, or how do I do it? And yes, what we do matters, and so does how we do it matters, just like Montel used to say, right, this is how we do it. But to me, what, the what and the why become truly meaningful when we are able to see the why. And in the classroom, we're able to see the why, just as Nicole and Nutrition Services have been able to see the why they do the things that they do. So I challenge everyone in Rialto to help me create a song called "This Is Why We Do It." And Nutrition Services and Nicole have already written the first verses. So my challenge to the rest of you is to become generative and do the things that you do with love and with the why behind it, not the what or the how, but the why we're doing the things that we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Avila. This evening, we traditionally start with the student board member. Are you ready, or you want me to come back to you?
I'm ready.
Okay, go for it. I like that.
Good evening. Thank you, Board of Education, Dr. Avila, and Mr. Ayala, and Ms. Jeffrey, and my fellow classmates, for giving me this opportunity to represent the Rialto Unified School District student voice. I am extremely excited and ready to learn what, about more of my district and, yeah, and give my insight on what's going on in other schools and with students. Thank you all.
Nice to see that you're not mic shy. Okay. Mr. Ayala?
Thank you, President Martinez. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Okay, with back to school comes changes in routines for parents, staff, and our kids. And tonight, I would like to share some thoughts on what we can do to help our kids prepare for the new year. And I think about the needs that they have. Now, think about different levels of kids, too. You know, we have the little ones, and then we have the high school kids, so there's a gamut there. But when you think about what their needs are, and this is not just our kids, this is for everyone. You need, you need to start off with nutrition, you need to start off with food. So if you expect to achieve throughout the day, you have to have something nutritious in you to have that energy. And that's for all of us. But when you leave the house and you don't feel loved, you don't feel listened to, you don't feel cared for, it's hard to achieve. You can clam up and get angry and feel the whole world's against you. It is important to feed your children and love them. And they need a roof over their head. They need time to debrief, to relax. They're human beings. Got to get them out of the elements. When they're in school all day long, they're hearing noise, they're hearing, they're being challenged. So when they get home, they need to rest a little bit, too. We all do. Keep that in mind. What else do they need? They need to feel when they're in a group that they are appreciated. All of us need to feel like we're appreciated for something that we do. You see a child jumping up and down, that's an indication somebody's not paying attention to them. Okay, so that's self-esteem is what we're talking about there. And then as kids get all these basic needs taken care of, give them an opportunity to give back early in their, in their, in their lives. When they get that feeling that they're giving back, it takes those children to another level. Okay, so there's just a few points there, okay? And I think, when is the best opportunity to meet with our kids? The dinner hour, okay? What a great opportunity. So if your kids don't, if they're not ready to communicate, make something special. If it's only once a week, twice a week, but make those, those days of the week special. If you're here at 6 o'clock and you're ready for dinner, you're gonna get a great dinner, and you're gonna get dessert, too. I know it's a challenge. But, you know, if you establish those routines, you're gonna get some dividends in return. Okay, in summary, I hope you appreciate how valuable just these basic thoughts were to help you with your children. I will end by telling you, raising my two daughters, when they were in high school, I should have just put a revolving door, because they had friends that wanted to take them places. And I could see that, wow, my family was kind of unraveling, and I was losing that control as a father. And, and we were all kind of too busy to even talk. And all of a sudden, it occurred to me that I needed to change my routine, and I did. What I did was what I shared with you there. I started cooking. I started doing things that I'd never done before, making bread and, and special aromatic dinners. And that changed everything for my family, and I hope it changes, changes your family as well. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few words with you.
Thank you, Board Member Avila. Board Member Walker?
I'd just like to say, the last couple of weeks have been filled with health fairs, safety fairs, backpack giveaways, kids getting haircuts, backpacks, teeth cleaned, and all these kind of things, exciting things that have gone on in Rialto the last couple of weeks just to prepare to go back to school here in Rialto. Very excited, and I just want to say, I'm glad to be here, glad to see you all, your faces, and I look forward to an exciting new 2018-19.
Short and sweet. Okay. Clerk O'Kelly?
Well, I wanted to welcome everyone to the 2018-19 school year. It promises to be exciting and productive. So we're gonna meet it head-on and have a great year. Wanted to give a shout-out about summer school graduation. I'm really proud of those kids that, you know, whatever odds they faced earlier, they overcame them and they got that diploma, and they graduated as part of the class of 2018. So good for you, and I hope you're on to bigger and better things. Wanted to welcome our new student board member, Jasmine. We're delighted to have you. And I know you will enjoy being a board member. It gets a little crazy sometimes. One of the things that has bothered me, first of all, it's been so hot. And I don't do well in heat, you know, I kind of melt. But it got to me thinking about the fires. And, I mean, we're sitting here and we're okay for right now, but this state is literally on fire right now. And I've got a few statistics about why we have so many fires. And one of them is that because people want to live near a view of the mountains or of grasslands or whatever, so there's more and more houses being built in those areas. So when a small fire breaks out, it's got a lot more fuel to keep it going. And that's one of the reasons, any more of these fire storms, you hear losses of homes, you know, thousands of homes lost, and it didn't used to be that way. In California, 95% of the population of California lives on 6% of the land. So think of those numbers. Almost 100% of the people live on 6% of the land in California. That indicates how packed in we are, how close we are, and the homes are in very close proximity. Found out also that 84% of all wildfires are ignited by humans, whether through downed power lines, careless campfires, or arson. 84%. They're not started by lightning, are started by humans. And at this time, we have 14,000 firefighters battling 16 major fires in the state of California. There are some things we can do to be proactive, but the resources have to be provided for that. They have to dig these fire lines, and they have to do backfires and do all that ahead of the fire season. So hopefully, we can save more homes and more lives. So I was, I'm hoping that somehow we will get the resources allocated to be able to do that because it only promises to get worse every year. So anyway, that was my bit on fires. And I'm hoping they get these under control, and I'm hoping it cools down. And I really hope we get a good flood. That would stop it all. I mean, all the fires. Anyway, thank you and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Clerk O'Kelly. Vice President Montez, please.
Thank you, Board President, Mr. Martinez. And first, I'd just like to welcome everybody here tonight. Good evening. Welcome back to school. Whenever, whenever I tell the boy, whenever I tell my kids, "Back to school, welcome back to school," they say, "Dad, what's wrong with you?" I say, "Oh, it's a..." When I was growing up, you know, we had this whole back-to-school thing. There was a bunch of movies on it and everything. So they just looked at me kind of weird, right? But I want to congratulate student board member Jasmine Hernandez. Welcome and congratulations. You know, being a student board member, I believe even just being a regular school board member, it opens your, your understanding, it expands your, a little bit of, how would I say? Your awareness, your perception on things, you know, to learn about and see how, how it is to be on the board and find out about different things that you weren't going to experience before. So welcome. P.S., there hasn't been a lot of crazy things happening on this board for a long time. And we hope we keep it that way. But if that were to happen again, don't worry, this board has been tried by fire. So whatever comes our way, I think we'll do all right. Congratulations to all of the new appointments, administrative appointments. Very, very deserving promotions and appointments. And we want everyone to know that the leadership that the board entrustes is doing a very good job. We're very happy. You know, we wouldn't vote 5-0 on all of the recommendations if we didn't believe in you and in the leadership. So keep up the good work, and let's keep moving forward. I want to congratulate the 19 students who graduated during summer school. You know, sometimes people have regrets, sometimes people, you know, wish they could have graduated on time. But, you know, graduating a summer, a summer late is not, it's not that bad. It's still graduating, you know? I'm not very always punctual person. Sometimes I'm a little late to the party or to an event or to a school board meeting or two.
Sometimes.
But, but, but I'm there, you know? And that's what matters is, you know, you might not be the first to cross the finish line, but you cross it. So congratulations again to those 19 students and their parents. Many of us here on the board were able to attend the graduation ceremony at Carter High School. And it was really nice to see the joy in the families and the students for completing that. I want to recommend, just advise everyone to stay hydrated, drink lots of water. You wouldn't believe how many people during the hot months suffer from dehydration. You would think, you know, what's so easy about just staying hydrated, just drink water? But for whatever reason, not everybody feels thirsty or gets thirsty or realizes that they're dehydrated. So just remember to drink plenty of water. Dr. Avila was talking about sweating up a storm these last two hot days. I hope you drink lots of water because, you know, you got to replace that water that, that we sweat out. And, and last but not least, I'm very excited for a new school year, a new chapter in our district's history because we are changing history here. And along with our student board members and everybody, thank you so much for being here tonight. And let's continue to move forward.
Thank you, Vice President Montez. Well, let's see. Everyone, welcome back to school, students and staff. I've already welcomed Jasmine. I'm glad to see your smiling face. I'm glad your mom's here, just all the support. Now, what, what school, what, what do you guys do? Who are you?
Rialto High School.
Right. Just checking. Okay. Go Knights, of course. Okay. Already congratulated all the promoted candidates. Thank you, Vice President Montez, for doing that. One of the things that I want to leave all of you with, whether you're a school board member, a student school board member, a parent, an adult, a student, think about legacy. If you're going to school, are you going to be on ASB? What, what do you want them to say about you? Think about legacy. What, what do you want your story to be? Because right now, you are living your story. So how do you want that to be written? You know, and do you want to be tardy? Do you want to, you know, go to the principal's office once a week? I mean, you know, do you want to get straight A's? You can change your story. You can set that goal, you can foresee who and what you're going to be. Okay, now's the time to start. Dr. Avila, when you first came in three years ago, I remember the interview process. And one of the challenges, one of the questions that we as a board were facing at that time was building our capacity. I see you're working hard on that. Thank you very much. And staff, thank you very much. And to end it, our students are why we do it. This is why we do it. Thank you. Okay, that's it. Okay, that's it.[715.24][715.24][applause] Okay, we move into public hearing and there is none, or are none. Consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. And we are moving to approve consent calendar items E through J. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any polls, any questions or comments? Nancy, Ms. O'Kelly?
H6 and H10 and 11, it's the same question for both of them.
Okay, H6, 10, 11. Okay, you have the floor.
Okay. On H6, in this training, I'd like to know how many teachers will be trained, how will the teachers be selected and what will the follow-up be to determine the effectiveness of the training? This is about the Cambrian Group?
Yes, so part of it will be, each school would have a teacher representative and at the secondary, right now we're considering having two teachers for secondary school. The teachers will be selected at the discretion of the principals. The idea behind this is to have a teacher representative on staff that could also serve as leads for the strategic plan and even though they may have one right now, we really, the goal is to really build their capacity directly with the in-depth two-day training for them. How this will be measured will be as with the strategic plan and the products of the strategic plan and the effectiveness of the strategic plans with the annual updates and as you've received information, we'll be doing an annual update in a week and a half for the district, but we also have annual updates by each of the schools on their individual strategic plans and so the goal is to make sure that the schools have the internal capacity to be able to really take their strategic plans to the next level.
Okay, and they'll do this every year, the update?
Well, yeah, the update as a district will be every year, will be annual and keep in mind that Dr. McDuffie and Kelly Bruce, who have come on board, are, were scheduled to go through the training with the Cambrian Group and unfortunately their, the trainings that they were set to schedule were canceled due to death in the family of the presenter and so they've been delayed, so we did not want to wait until they go through the training to be able to do it in-house for our staff, so we wanted the teachers to receive it directly from Dr. Cook. And in coming years, as more teachers build their capacity through the strategic plan, it will be done in-house, just as with the customer care, we're ready to transition to be able to do it ourselves for the rest of the staff as we build that capacity. The same idea is behind the strategic plan Cambrian Group training.
Okay, and when are we going to get Dr. McDuffie and Mr. Bruce?
They are set to schedule...
September 23rd.
Okay.
So next month.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. And then the other, you want me to do my other question?
Please go ahead.
I know we go back and forth with these things, but my idea of a contract is, in the contract, there's a set amount of money that is approved and why are we going above that set amount of money with the speech, additional speech and language services? I mean, why isn't it either estimated correctly or cut, the services are cut off when they reach the contracted amount?
So with the 10th, item number 10, there was some internal miscommunication with the projected number of kids that were going to receive the ESY services. So the budgets were developed based on the numbers that staff had in order to staff properly for the summer. Some additional numbers came through after the board approved the original plan for summer school and again, working in the best interest of kids, we did not want to deny these kids the opportunity to participate in ESY, so we went ahead and approved the services during the summer and are now coming to you to ratify this contract. So, again, it was an internal miscommunication between the original numbers and the numbers that came through after the deadline had passed.
Okay, well then number 11, we have even a larger amount that we're being asked to ratify, over $10,000.
And that's, again, it's the same as for the extended school year, for the summer school, for the kids with special needs that require the additional services.
We had parents and members of the community request why the district for many years didn't extend school services, learning opportunities for students with special needs during summer school, which is my understanding for, I don't know how long, for a number of years, that service was not provided and the board decided to offer that extended learning to them.
No, well, that's not the problem. The problem is why did they not write the contract for the correct amount of money?
Again, because the numbers that were initially provided to staff in special education were not the full numbers that came forth after the original budget was developed for the numbers that they did have in hand at the time. And again, that's really an internal matter that needs to be corrected for future years so that we can have some very discreet timelines and so that we can budget properly.
Okay, either that or you add a small pillow in the amount and put a "not to exceed that amount."
Okay.
Something, because I really do not like going back and having to approve changes, especially when it costs us money.
Well taken.
Done clerk? Okay.
I'm done.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, we are on page seven. Preferential vote by student board member. Will you help her, Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, vote by board members.
Aye.
Okay, motion and a second on K1, please.
So moved?
Second?
Thank you. K1 is to ratify the memorandum of understanding with the City of San Bernardino to provide one part-time 20-hour-per-week school resource officer through the San Bernardino Police Department to serve Rialto High School effective July 1st, 2018 through June 30th of 2021. The district will pay 100% of the 20 hours to include salary and benefits and overtime at 1.5 times the hourly rate, $65,000 per year or a combined total of $195,000 for three years to be paid from the general fund.
Questions, comments? Yes, Ms. O'Kelly?
Why is this a part-time position? I thought our SROs were full-time.
Is Chief here?
I spoke with Arnie about this particular contract and I asked him, you know, looking at it, where are we at and he indicated he had choice in terms of the officer and the hours are the same, so it is status quo in answer to your question. Apparently, we do not have, I guess, what you consider full-time, the hours are different in terms of when they work and so that's status quo. It's not something that we, it is something we could look at, but if you're asking me, you know, why did this contract come back this way, it's what we've done in the past and what we have in place for this particular school year, but if you want us to look at additional hours, you know, for a security officer on the campus, we can do that, it's just, that's not status quo, it would be a change.
Okay, just change from the old days at least because they used to be full-time positions. They'd be at the site all day.
They run according to the shift from the police department and so, you know, that's what I run into is sometimes they're coming on board maybe at 9:00 and, you know, we know school starts at a different time and sometimes they do, they run a four-day and they're, anyway, they're off on a day, so it's just a different schedule.
Okay, alright.
Okay, I just have a comment on that to write on yours. If we're paying them, we should set the hours. Just makes sense to me. Can we look into that?
And that, yeah, that along with other questions that have been raised with the SROs from the Rialto Police Department are the things that we're looking into right now.
Okay, thank you. And if they need extra hours, bring them to us, please, security, safety, absolutely. Okay, ready to vote, board? All right, vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion and a second on K2, please?
I have a no.
No.
Okay, we have one no. Four ayes and one no, thank you. Okay, can we have a motion and a second on K2, please?
So moved?
Second?
Okay, K2 is to approve an agreement with Generation Ready to provide 14 days of equity training for a total of 60 participants, assistant principals, teacher leaders, and six days of equity training for a total of 25 participants for the Equity Council effective August 9th, 2018 through June 30th of 2019 at a cost of $60,000 to be paid from the general fund.
Questions, comments, board? Seeing none, vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion and a second for K3, please?
So moved?
Second?
Thank you. K3 is to award RFP RIANS 2018-19-05 to the following vendors, Action Sales, Arrow Restaurant, Douglas Equipment and Yale Chase Equipment for the purchase of kitchen equipment for the fiscal year 2018-19. The costs of future items purchased from this bid will be paid from Fund 13, the cafeteria fund. There's them lunch ladies again. Questions or comments? Okay, vote by board members.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion and a second on K4, please.
So moved?
Second?
Thank you. K4 is to reject RFP RIANS 2018-19-04 tortilla bid and authorize the rebidding of the tortilla bid for nutrition services. Questions, comments?
We want handmade tortillas.
You want me to show up?
For all three. For all our students.
Okay, vote by board members.
Aye.
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 Got to have fun. Okay, motion and a second for K5.
So moved?
Second?
Thank you. K5 is to approve terminating the agreement with Papa John's for RFP RIANS 2018-19-03 pizza products. Questions, comments? Okay, vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion and a second for K6, please?
So moved?
Second?
Thank you. K6 is to award RFP RIANS 2018-19-03 pizza products to Pizza Hut for the 2018-19 fiscal year. The costs of future items purchased for this bid will be paid from Fund 13 cafeteria funds. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, vote by board members?
Aye.
And Board President, if I may?
Please do.
Is, do I see the winner of the tournament here?
Yes.
Do you want to entertain, did you guys want to entertain?
Yes, I was gonna...
Okay, now's a good time.
Before we adjourn, we have the mystery Cindy, the winner of the big $5,000 oil portrait that she will probably have painted in Palm Beach. This is Cindy Burgos, she is the proud grandmother of four children here in the district and great-grandmother of six children here in the district, so congratulations Cindy for participating and for winning the award.
I want to thank the school board. I've never won anything in my whole entire life, it's the first time and when I got the phone call, I got so excited, I just hopped in my car and I'm driving and I said, "Who did I speak with?" And carefully she called me back to make sure I was on my way, thank you, one and all.
Congratulations.
We actually had a grand time yesterday, last evening and it was just great. It was the first time I've attended and I will continue to attend, not to win anything, but just to participate.
Well, maybe.
The wrestling matches were like so fun. The whole thing was fun, the dogs, it was just very impressive, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the evening. Thank you for the support for our community.[1600.76][1601.24][applause]
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you so much. Overwhelmed right now.
She's cute.
We have one minute left.
Then I shall stay.
That is one excited Cindy, okay. All right, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on Wednesday, August 22nd, 2018 at 7:00 p.m. at the Dr. John Archazalunas Education Center, 182 East Walnut Avenue, Rialto, California. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the superintendent's office. Okay, Mr. Ayala, is she prepared to? All right, can I have a motion from the student board member?
Aye.
I second.
Oh, move to adjourn.
Right.
I second that.
Excellent, all right. Preferential vote by student board member.
Aye.
Vote by board members.
Aye.
And the time is 8:06. Good night, all.